Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a special legislative session for the Spokane City Council of October 10th. In a few minutes, we're going to hear from Mayor Nadine Woodward on the conditions of the city. But we have all sorts of things going on tonight before that. And we're going to hear the roll call here in a minute, and then we're going to have a special pledge of allegiance. So Ms. Fister, if you could call the roll.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone is absent.
All right. And the Girl Scouts are going to help us say the pledge. So Brian, bring up the Scouts. We've got some brownies and daisies from all across the city.
Thank you, President. Yes, Troop 2106 is here to celebrate the Day of the Girl.
Here's the flag right up here.
Come closer up if you want. You guys want to come closer?
Yeah. All right. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now stay right there. Councilmember Wilkerson's going to read a proclamation, and then Brian's going to say a few words.
Hi, girls.
This way.
So I was a Girl Scout mommy, and I sold my fair share of cookies and earned badges. So help me out. Make new friends. Friends, but keep the old. One is silver and the other gold. Thank you.
Very nice.
All right.
Whereas October.
Can you check your microphone there real quick? Just get a little closer to your mic.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. Whereas October 11th, 2022 marks a decade since the United Nations adopted Resolution 66/170 to declare October 11th as the International Day of the Girl, to recognize girls' rights and the unique challenges girls face around the world. And whereas the world's premier leadership development organization for girls, Girl Scouts, has emphasized public service, civic engagement, and fostering a sense of community in girls for over a century. Girl Scouts work to champion the ambitions, cultivate the talents, and develop the skills of girls to be leaders in their own world and in ours. You guys are future leaders. Whereas in these incredibly challenging times, Girl Scouts provide community, consistency, and connection for girls, and is a safe haven in all the uncertainty while offering girls 21st-century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math STEM to the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. Whereas the International Day of the Girl focuses attention on the need to address the challenges girls face and to promote girls' empowerment and the fulfillment of their human rights. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2022, as International Day of the Girl in Spokane and encourage the community to recognize and honor the 1.1 billion girls across the globe who make the world a better place.
And Brian, if you want to say a few words at the microphone, feel free.
I can. Thank you. Thank you, President, and thank you, Mayor, for that. Thank you, Councilwoman Wilkerson, for that, and to all the board members up here. You know, it's been it's been over two years since I've been here last with COVID. Thank you for celebrating the Day of the Girl. This is our future, and it's so, so bright. I just want to thank the community out there. 2022 was the best year ever. We sold over a million cookies. We've never even been close to that. So thank you for eating all the Thin Mints. But we also sent more girls to camp on behalf of you, because when you buy cookies, you send girls to camp. We have our membership now we've regained from COVID. We're back to our 2014 membership numbers. And we're the only council in America that can say that, the only council in America that can say that. And I think you'd all agree, by unanimous consent, that when there's more Girl Scouts in the world, that you all make the world a better place. So thank you very much for being here, for honoring the Day of the Girl. It is 10 years since the United Nations came forward and said, let's hear the girl's voice. And girls, you keep speaking, because we're listening. Thank you, council, for all you do.
Thank you. And now, courtesy of Spokane Arts and their poets, I'd like to invite Roberta Botelli for some poetry at the podium, reading "Sensory Overload."
Good evening. This is a poem about a walk in Lincoln Park. Four dogs pulling us out the door, noses siphoning the blast of a million cents like heat from an oven door. Water skiing down the steps, we fight to stay upright. Tails swishing, tongues tasting, nothing was ever so perfect as this moment, and this one, and this one. We smile at crocuses, electric green leaf tips, rainbow flags. Old house, older house, red house, blue house. Big yards with small dogs, small yards with big dogs. The white, formal house, a pillared butler welcoming us to the park just beyond the crannied wall. Marauding turkeys, a gang of poopers. Stop, drop, and roll, swim through the green clover and acorns, moss and mud. We yield our path to strollers drawn like moths to the slide and swings, little sticky wings bumping the bright plastic. They'll stay until they're pulled away for a snack. Up the hill, zig and zag, mossy Buddha boulders collecting moisture, feeding ferns, breathing life into the park. Climbers, giant paperclips nestled in the crags across the rock face. Plants smoothing lapels lining up for their spot in the parade of spring and summer. Mock orange, lilac, ocean spray, a yoki carpet of balsam root. The sun trading favors with the moon, buying more hours of daylight for the show. All the smells are new again, two worlds layered together, hominid and canine. We understand traffic, poop bags, garbage cans. They understand everything else.
Thank you so much, Roberta.
Thank you.
And we are going to honor Indigenous Peoples' Day in a couple of ways, three ways, actually, tonight. One is to read the land acknowledgement that we publish every week, but we twice a year read it. And then, secondly, we are going to have a proclamation. And then, third, we're going to get a report from our friends from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe on some of their plans of developing land within the City of Spokane. So I'm going to do the land acknowledgement, and then we will do a couple more proclamations and then get that report. So this is a land acknowledgement that was created by many Indigenous people contributing to it, and it was adopted by the Spokane City Council on March 22nd, 2021. And it goes like this. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truth and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Now I'd like to transition into a proclamation of White Cane Awareness Day. Councilmember Bingle.
Whereas the United States Congress adopted a joint resolution in 1964 designating October 15th of each year as White Cane Safety Day, recognizing that the white cane, which every blind citizen of Spokane, Washington, has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society and live the lives that they want. And whereas the City of Spokane values the talents and abilities of blind people and supports inclusion through the continued removal of physical and societal barriers that can prevent full community participation. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2022, as White Cane Awareness Day in Spokane, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the history of the white cane and recognize it as a tool that helps blind people achieve independence and equality while navigating our community.
And I don't think we have anyone here unless I miss someone, but please join me in applauding for that independence. And now, Councilmember Stratton is going to read the proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I'd like to welcome up Ralph Allen Jr. He's the Fish and Wildlife Manager for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, and Thomas Bilado, who is the Salmon Restoration Lead.
Thank you. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and the United States endorsed the United Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December 16th, 2010. And whereas the City of Spokane is built upon the homeland and village sites of the Indigenous Peoples of this region and recognizes that the Indigenous Peoples of the land that would later become known as the Americas, as the Americas, have lived here since time immemorial. And whereas the City of Spokane recognizes the historical and spiritual significance of Spokane Falls to the Native people of the region who came to the falls as a gathering place for fishing, spiritual practice, trading, celebrations, and the shaping and the shaping of bounty. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Spokane and urge citizens to recognize the values of the many contributions made by the community through Indigenous Peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contributions that have and continue to affect the character of Spokane.
So, welcome again. We're so pleased to have you in our city and working on the land and the water. And we like what we like to do is get a report on Indigenous Peoples' Days from some Indigenous people and what they're up to. So thank you for being here, and we'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the Spokane City Council. First and foremost, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Thank you for giving the tribe this opportunity to publicly speak on Indigenous Peoples' Day and for this opportunity to build the relationship between the City of Spokane and the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. So thank you. Like President Beggs said, my name is Ralph Allen. I'm a member of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, and I am the tribe's Fish and Wildlife Program Manager. Since time immemorial, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe's Aboriginal territory stretched from Montana through Idaho and into Washington. Right here in the city limits of Spokane, my people shared these lands with the Spokane Tribe, and our tribes coexisted and prospered from these lands and all that they had to offer. There was plenty of roots to dig, berries to gather, game to hunt, and fish to fish that sustained both of our tribes. Nowadays, in these modern times, things have changed a little. There's boundaries that restrict the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. They restrict us to the state of Idaho. They say that we aren't only an Idaho tribe. They restrict us to the boundaries of our reservation and say that these are our territories. And historically, that just wasn't the way. And until the tribe recently acquired the 47 acres, the Squay U property, as we call it, it doesn't have to be that way anymore. The historical significance of this property will not only benefit my people, but it'll benefit all people in the community going forward. And to give you more insight about the Squay U property and updates that you were asking for, I'd like to introduce Tom Bilado. He's the technical lead for this property and the Anadromus Project Lead for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for inviting us here today to speak. As Ralph said, it is an honor to be here and kind of giving an update on what's been going on down to that property and hopefully what our plans are for in the future. So I think this will help me go forward.
It can even stretch a little further, and then you can just be closer to the microphone, but have it right there.
No problem. So this is a picture on the property that was taken in July. This was a camp that had been set up in preparation for the return of salmon back to Hangman Creek and back to the Aboriginal territory of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe and the Spokane Tribe. This is the property in question or that we're here to highlight today. As Ralph said, it's about 47 acres. It's 20 acres of floodplain habitat, about four acres within just the riparian zone, and just about two-thirds of a mile of stream of Hangman Creek that run through it. This property was originally planned to be developed into a residential community. I think over 90 homes were planned to be built on this property, on the floodplain of Hangman Creek. There's not just the significance to the tribe on this property, but just to the community in general in this area. There's a lot of use on the trail system above it and even through the property. And just the fact that there's pushing 50 acres of open land within the city limits of Spokane that was undeveloped was pretty remarkable. And last last fall, the tribe purchased this property. With the property, there are some water rights with it. They were traditionally used for agricultural use on the property, a consumptive water right, and I'll touch on that a little bit more. And then Ralph talked about the historical significance of it. The name of the property, Squay U, was actually described in a text back in the '30s, and it identified a permanent village site along the banks of Hangman Creek where the tribal community would gather, they'd hunt all kinds of game, including antelope, and harvest salmon and large trout, and large trout were most definitely steelhead trout that ran up Hangman Creek to go and spawn. And just the significance that a permanent village was here kind of speaks to the nature of the abundant resources that were available in the area. This is a picture of Hangman Creek itself running through the property. It's in, you know, for Hangman Creek, it's in relatively good shape. There's a fair amount of native vegetation growing along the stream, although there are opportunities for improving the riparian ecosystem in the area and improving the stream quality and water quality that runs through the property. And this kind of builds off a lot of the work that the Coeur d'Alene Tribe does in the headwaters of Hangman Creek within the current reservation boundaries and a lot of the habitat restoration that's occurring in Hangman Creek. Going back again to last July, this was an event that was really quite remarkable, and to just be there and witnessing the return of an adult salmon that originated from these waters, the salmon, actually, that's pictured here that Vince Pion is holding and getting ready to release back in Hangman Creek, was released in Upper Hangman Creek in 2020 as a juvenile. It outmigrated through five dams with no fish passage, including Grand Cooley Dam, made it all the way to the ocean, and then came back. And we were able to get acquire this fish from the base of Chief Joseph Dam and bring it back home. And it was just a really emotional experience to be a part of and to see that salmon go back into her home waters and give a glimpse of what can be in the future, that these iconic species have the ability to still come back home, back into the Spokane River and into Hangman Creek, even with everything that's going on today with hydroelectric development and the issues with water quality, that these fish know their way home and can be returned back into these home waters. And really, that is the idea here of this property, is to provide for salmon the way the property used to provide for salmon and the way that salmon would provide for the tribes, and to once more get back to that point. As many of you may well know, there's a huge effort in the in the upper Columbia to restore salmon back into these home waters. And it's a salmon reintroduction effort that's being spearheaded by the Upper Columbia United Tribes, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, the Spokane Tribe of Indians, the Confederate Tribes of the Calville Reservation, and the Kalispel Tribe of Indians and the Kootenai Tribe of Idaho are all involved in this effort to get salmon back into these home waters. And this property serves as an avenue to move to that point by providing a lot of this community outreach, bringing awareness to what was and what can be in the Hangman Creek watershed and in the Spokane River. As part of this reintroduction effort, the idea is to have a place where we can start to grow fish. And this brings me back to the water rights that this property has. There is a fair amount of groundwater that's being that is available at this property. It is currently identified for ag use, for consumptive use, but the tribe thinks it can be utilized for a small-scale fish hatchery to help answer a lot of these questions on how we can get salmon back into these areas. There's also a lot of opportunity for restoration on the property, not just the riparian restoration along the corridor, but wetland restoration. It's a, you know, 30-plus acres of floodplain habitat that is just ripe for wetland creation. And certainly, that will be a main focus of the tribe. The tribe's or the property has been sitting kind of stagnant for a number of years, and with that are a fair amount of noxious weeds that have invaded into the property. The tribe is currently developing a weed management plan to start working on control of those noxious weeds. We have talked about in the near future trying to get into city sewer and water on that property as well. I think that there is plans to do some work on Inland Empire Way, and if there's an opportunity to work with the city on how we can start to move sewer and water into the property as that construction is occurring, maybe that would be a great way to move forward. And then going back to this aquaculture or fish hatchery, certainly there's going to be some permitting and regulatory requirements that are that the city will be involved in if we can get this going. The property is not zoned specifically for aquaculture, as it is, and I'm not sure there is even aquaculture zoning that currently exists in the City of Spokane. But that doesn't mean we can't go through that door and try to move forward on this. Some other things that we've been throwing around, too, like I talked about before, it's a pretty heavily used trail up above the property. There could be opportunities for working with the city on getting access to the trail system if, when, and if Inland Empire Way is expanded, and somehow this property could be a part of that. We do think there's opportunities certainly for interpretive sites, whether it's highlighting salmon reintroduction, the initiative moving forward for salmon reintroduction, or even riparian and wetland habitat restoration. And this last bullet point here, talking about tribal trust and trust land, that is also something the tribe is interested in, in getting this property into trust. I do want to make clear, there is no plans to build a casino on this property. We get questions about that quite a bit. That is a totally different type of trust, and that is certainly not the goal of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe on this property. So with that, we could take questions or?
Want to say anything?
Yeah, I do. You know, I want to thank you both. Council President and I have been working on this project from our end for years, and we were thrilled when the Coeur d'Alene Tribe came forward and said they wanted to buy it, but we couldn't tell anybody because it was a real estate deal, and it was killing us. Because I wanted to shout it from the rooftops that that a responsible tribal entity was going to purchase this and make it whole again. So thank you both. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the people at the city and administration and council and council staff and former and current employees that we're all really committed to saving this land to be what you now are taking in the vision and creating. And we couldn't be more excited. And I've met with some of your tribal council members before, and I said at the time, and I'll just repeat, that we stand ready to help you. You are right. I've talked with your lawyer a bit, and the city doesn't have, it's sort of, there's an aquaculture placeholder, but no, nothing to it. So we have work to do to, now that we have an opportunity to flush that out, that's that's great. And then the last thing I'll just say is I run on the trail above there just about every day and got to watch the encampment and see the activity, and I can't wait. about every day and got to watch the encampment and see the activity, and I can't wait to see more. So, thank you for joining us and just giving a taste of what this land might have been like, but more importantly, what it can be like in the future. So, we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lindsay, come up and talk to us about the Logan Neighborhood. As many of you know, we haven't been able to have town hall meetings for a while, so we, we've missed on the, you know, four nights a year hearing from all the neighborhood councils, and we've been inviting neighborhood councils to come down and share a little bit about what's going on. So, Lindsay Shaw is from the Logan Neighborhood, a great leader there. Let us know what's happening.
Well, thank you for having me. Thank you to the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. That's awesome. Yeah, Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. Right after the pandemic shut everything down, I reached out to the Spokane Tribe to see what the history of Logan was through the tribe's eyes, and it was dreadfully depressing. So, I figure the least we can do is try to steward a nice place to live and make sure that we clean up our garbage and clean up after our dogs. Anyway, so I made this little PowerPoint. I'm not a professional, but let's check it out. Logan Neighborhood is historic. It's beautiful. It's got many great homes. It's home to many schools. It's also home to halfway houses and shelters. So, I love how dynamic we are. We have Planned Parenthood and many Jesuits. So, how more, much more dynamic could you get? Over the pandemic, we have been busy making improvements to like our neighborhood sign that's on Euclid to the north of the neighborhood with the community engagement grant dollars, a little bit of effort and some, working with some really cool old work, woodworkers, we were able to make this happen. And through this, the city's also kind of figured out a way to help us trim the trees so it looked a little bit less like Sleepy Hollow and a little bit more like a neighborhood. Even the water department came through and planted some lavender plants and some tall grasses, and although it's been taken over by weeds, it's still, somebody came through and is making sure, like the neighbors came out and said, "This is so cool. How do we get involved?" We also made murals happen, and it was just, it felt like this graffiti was a call to action. How can we make our neighborhood a better place? And for this business owner, it's actually, they don't own the business, the, the land, but they, it is their responsibility to paint over the graffiti each time it's graffitied. So, when you take a little bit of donated paint and find some artists and then beg for their talents, you can make amazing things happen. And so, this is next to Arc Tose Coffee. I welcome all of you to come and have a cup of coffee and check out what could be, right? What is now? It's started as a dream. Similar to this is this picture I just saw, and I was like, "Wow, we could do something like that in Logan." And I noticed that right where the kids cross Columbus in Illinois, there's crossing guards there, and there's graffiti on each corner. And I asked the city, it's kind of like no one wanted to claim ownership of that. So, I got to knock on neighbors' doors and ask if they would care if we painted over it, and they would say, "Yeah, go ahead, but someone's just going to graffiti over it. We've tried everything." And worked with the muralist to make each corner different colors, and it's really brightened up that intersection, and no one has painted over it. So, maybe when kids are walking to school, they just have a little bit less stress to look at. Yeah. Logan is home to so many small locally-owned businesses. It's so inspiring. It's such a contrast between how fast people go up and down Hamilton Street and then to see all the locally-owned businesses. I would love to talk to anybody who has expertise in starting a business district. I think it's something that we could do. I've talked to businesses and they're like, "Well, what would, we're interested in communicating, but what would be in it for us?" And so, having a clearer idea of what that could look like for each of them, I'm interested. Anybody? So.
We'll get back to you on that. We have some resources.
Very good. We are stewards of our land. This is right across from Logan Elementary. There were knives found in the grass over here. You could barely cross or walk in the sidewalk. It's just kind of a mess. This is picked up from the neighborhood on our way to this. We've had two cleanups this year. We've been, we felt very fortunate to have a cleanup in April and again, one in September. We've also had two block parties this year, one because, in the spring because we couldn't do it in the fall due to the pandemic, and then one just in September as well. So, lots of action. Our neighbors are amazing. Gonzaga is a wonderful place. They help bring opportunity to our neighborhood. And then we also have neighbors that do stuff very organically. I have a neighbor who runs a cleanup every first Saturday of the month. She also does like, she feeds people from her garden once a, a month as well, and she has a, an agreement with the recycling company that if she brings them the recycling, they can keep the money from that, and she gets to throw their, her garbage away in the dumpster. So, just working with neighbors and with what you've got right in the neighborhood, you can really have an impact on your neighborhood. Yeah, through partnerships, we did nine bins at our last cleanup. One lady had 100 bags of garbage in her yard, and through some people, actually a, a sports group came and volunteered. I, we couldn't have made that difference for them without them. So, the cleanup program is just so instrumental, and I just can't thank you guys enough. I don't know if that was, would be yours or the mayor's responsibility to keep supporting, but I highly recommend it. Yeah, I wrote some notes. There's so much going on in Logan. We have Denny Osuhara Middle School just went in on the corner of Foothills and Perry Street, thinking about how we could maybe calm Foothills to like one lane each way with a turn lane in the middle to help kids walk to school without feeling like they're about to get ran over. Or I just noticed there's a ton of apartments going in across from Yokes. There's also the Gonzaga Family Haven, which is ran partially by a Logan resident, which is really amazing, but I see those kids just dash across Hamilton like it's any other street, and it's, ah! I feel personally like responsible for trying to figure out a solution to that. So, if you are interested in helping me, I would love that. Yeah, we had the firefighters fill our dunk tank at our block party this last time. They are the firefighters that are right next to Gonzaga Family Haven. It was pretty cool. They used it as a drill. It was pretty fun to get some Gonzaga leaders, myself, into the dunk tank. You're all welcome next time. We got to go work with Gonzaga, making a mural on Trent and Hamilton, kind of right off the Hamilton exit. We put out this flyer, had three options with a QR code. We had over 400 responses. That was just from posting them in those small local businesses, and the majority chose the one that is currently on the building where the Global Neighborhood Thrift is located. I recommend checking it out and would love also more funds for art. So, I don't know everything. I'm still figuring it out, but it would be nice for it to say like something like, "Welcome to Logan." We still have lots of work to do. This is from our last traffic calming. All the red dots equal places that people think need to be addressed. We have, we're home of the first Greenway on Cincinnati, and there are many accidents on that street, a lot of speeding, parking on both sides. It's a little bit terrifying to ride with your family on. So, that's the thing. Also, the river road, kind of right where the new Avista Upriver Park and the retirement community meet together, it's kind of terrifying. So, I know that Michael has came and talked about, listened to concerns, but if we could figure out a solution, it's just, right where I walk with my family, with my dog, there's also cars that have rolled over because they're just careless and speeding. Have you checked out that park? It's so nice. It's really inspiring. And the Parks Department's working on a plan to do a 50-year celebration for the Expo 74. Hopefully, we can get some attention to our centennial trail between the Hamilton Walking Bridge and Avista Park. I'm sorry if I'm going on, I just get really excited. We're thankful for the, what you're doing with the Don Cordon Bridge, Illinois Avenue, Illinois. I got to walk on it last night and just kind of look at our bluff with this fresh way of seeing it. It's not all ruddy. It's beautiful. And to ride our bikes or to maybe, I don't know, just enjoy that bluff, just like the, the bluff on the South Hill, it's, just feels like a really cool, amazing thing that's happened. And yeah, this, this playground only open to students, that's at Logan Elementary, there's issues with drug use, and so they've closed down this park. They've taken away Heath Park because of stuff, activity going on. I do have to appreciate what's happened in the Logan Peace Park. We have a new toy, and like the Avista Park is beautiful. So, it's hard, it's, there's good and bad, and it's constantly changing, and yeah. So, Gonzaga partners with City of Spokane for the Spokane Neighborhood Leadership Academy. The next one starts in January, and if anyone's inspired to see changes in their neighborhoods, I would recommend them sign up. I think you can sign up anytime, hopefully between now and then. And if you're interested, reach out to me. And if you live, work, or worship in Logan Neighborhood, we would love to have you at our next Neighborhood Council meeting on the second Tuesday of each month from 6:00 to 7:30 at Donut Parade.
All right. Donut Parade?
Donut Parade.
That's great.
It's, it's open 24 hours now.
Wow.
Yes.
Okay, that's got to draw people. Yes?
Yeah, it's getting there. We've had to rebuild a lot through the pandemic. A lot of our residents were never able to access Zoom. They're either elderly or don't have access to internet, so it's a rebuild, it's definitely in a rebuild situation. Any questions?
Yeah, great. Thanks for coming and really giving us a sense of your neighborhood through your eyes. I really appreciate it.
Sorry, I don't have any questions. I would like to.
Yeah.
But no, we just, Michael and I talk about you specifically quite a bit because you're a great advocate for that neighborhood, and we appreciate you being there. Running, running a neighborhood is, is a really thankless position. I know you put in a ton of hours every week, and I know that it can be overwhelming, but in, in the Northeast, we have a precious few advocates like yourself, and you're really important to the Northeast, and we really appreciate you. When it comes to the business district, we are actually going through this process with Chief Gary, and so we're learning from Terry Stripes, and so we'll make sure that we loop you into that to get you into it. But no, yeah, we just, you're a really valuable member of the city and specifically the Northeast and the Logan Neighborhood, so thank you for everything you do for us.
Yes, well, hopefully more get inspired, and let's get our parks cleaned up, and let's clean up our neighborhoods, and let's make it the best city we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. All right, so we, once a year, we have the great privilege to have the mayor come to City Council and give us a statement on the conditions and affairs of the city. We have Mayor Nadine Woodward and many of her key staff people. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Thanks for all that you and your team do for the city. Most people don't understand it, but every day is a challenge at City Hall. I can speak to that, and thanks for meeting it.
Well, thank you so much. A good evening to everyone who is watching at home on City Cable 5 and online, and a special welcome and thank you to those of us joining in the City Council chambers for the annual Statement of Conditions and Affairs. Thank you, City Council, for hosting me and my cabinet, who are here tonight as well. This is the third time that I have given this address, but the first time the pandemic has allowed us to gather in person for it, so we're grateful to have this conversation with you. The past few years have thrown a lot our way as a city and as a nation. Those variables have impacted how we do business and how we pay for the services that we provided uninterrupted through those challenges. We are stronger for those experiences which have opened new doors to collaboration, seeing us care for those in our community who need it, and have us looking ahead to finding ways to sustain the investments in the future of our community. None of that is easy and will require disciplined adherence to the core mission of city government. As we'll discuss, there are some great opportunities ahead for us. Tonight, according to the Spokane City Charter, Article 4, Section 24, I am fulfilling my duty as mayor to annually at the Second October Meeting at the City Council to deliver the Statement of Conditions and Affairs. This year's address finds us at a crossroads in our recovery with a chance to emerge stronger and on much more solid footing than most other cities. Our outlook is a bit mixed. Economically, our community is recovering steadily. Socially, we have needs to address related to mental health, public safety, housing, and homelessness. First, the good news. Spokane is experiencing significant job and industry growth as we continue our economic recovery. Companies are hiring to meet consumer demand, and job openings are available across our many sectors. Key industries like transportation and housing, advanced manufacturing, health services, professional and business services, and agriculture have shown resiliency, according to the Washington Department of Employment Security. Construction activity continues to be steady. Highlights over the past year include Jubilant Hollister Steer doubling the size of its injectable filling production capacity, Potlatch Delta Core acquiring Atlanta-based Catchmark Timber Trust, the opening of the UW, UW-GU Health Partnership Building, and the beginning of extensive renovation at the Elson S. Floyd College of Medicine at Washington State University. These organizations and disciplines are important legacy and growth industries of our regional economy. The city has also recently partnered with the U.S. Small Business Administration, ANAHANA, to invest in and grow small businesses to create an economic development culture of inclusivity and equity by leveraging partnerships and relationships to maximize collaborations that lift businesses financially and strengthen workforces. Small businesses are the backbone of our economic health and fitness, with more than 10,000 in Spokane that employ fewer than 10 people. Spokane is once again drawing major conventions and industry gatherings that bring hundreds, sometimes thousands at a time, to our city. In the past couple of weeks alone, I've visited the Pacific Northwest Employment Forum, which is the regional arm of the national organization that focuses exclusively on inclusive employment and career advancement opportunities for people with disabilities, also the American Public Works Association and the Association of Washington Businesses. These critical investments, collaborations, and gatherings build an economic lifeline for Spokane at a critical time in our city. Spokane's per capita income was $50,000 in 2020. Despite our standing as the second-largest city, that placed us at just 17th in the state, 16% below the U.S. average and 25% below the state average. Our median household income at just more than $60,000 is well below the state's $77,000, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. Over the period of 2016 to 2020, about 13 and 1/2% of our population was living below the poverty level in Spokane County. That's well above the state's 9 and 1/2%. According to data from Alice Reports, which measures affordability of basic needs for income-constrained employed households, the cost of essentials increased an average of 3 and 1/2% annually nationwide, while the official rate of inflation was 1.8%. 1/3 of Washington's nearly 2.9 million households struggle to make ends meet. That report was in 2020, a decade after the end of the Great Recession and before the pandemic. Clearly, we still have work to do as we enter another recession, and we- we still have work to do as we enter another recession. And we must keep in mind that important community context as we think about how we afford to deliver for our neighborhoods. Spokane as a city government also resembles that statewide trend. The pandemic accounted for an estimated $37 million in lost revenue to us. The preliminary budget was prepared last week. It shows a $5 million gap between expenses and revenues, creating some decision points very similar to ones many households in Spokane are experiencing themselves. For those like the city who are fortunate enough to have built up a rainy day fund and still have unspent federal pandemic relief dollars, the choice is where and how to invest limited resources to meet basic needs and emerge more strongly from the pandemic and the recession. Maintaining and sustaining core city services will be at the center of honest, collaborative, and pragmatic conversations over the next month. It will be about prioritizing necessities, delaying purchases that we know can wait, and deploying resources strategically as a bridge until revenues improve. My preliminary budget invests in people, people in neighborhoods, people who need shelter, people who deliver services for our community. Those investments improve cleanliness with increased litter crews and coverage time, meets increased demand in volume of garbage collection, and accommodates growing construction demand in volume. Each of these are basic needs in a growing community like ours. Funding is also directed toward increased shelter space, making better use of existing resources to help individuals and families get back on their feet, and connecting people to services that stabilize and sustain. These are necessary in a time when so many in our community really need a lift. Maintaining a city workforce, like every industry right now, has felt the demands and the impacts of the past two years, while employees fought to keep services at the levels our community expects, has been prioritized. Our challenge now is a highly competitive labor market. It's to keep the city standing as a desirable place to work, adjust to labor market pressures, and maintain relevancy in a marketplace that is all competing for the same talent. Investments we make must enhance the health and safety of the community and better meet developing community needs. We must prioritize maintaining public safety, housing, and homelessness, while addressing staff burnout and capacity concerns. Spokane is a growing population. Growth in the county was the highest among the other 39 counties over the past couple of years, slightly less rapid than the city limits. That's according to EWU's Institute for Public Policy and Economic Analysis. As a growing city and regional hub, we are facing many real issues that parallel state and national concerns. Drugs, particularly fentanyl, are deeply impacting the heart and soul of our community, leaving a destructive path of housing and employment instability, property crime, and violence. Families in our community are still hurting. About 8,000 city customers making up nearly $8.5 million in past due bills for water, sewer, and garbage. Most of those customers fell behind in the early days of the pandemic. They have not been able to catch up. We must use our remaining ARPA funds to ease the burden on them and on the city. Rapid growth in the cost of housing in Spokane has outpaced the ability for many to keep up with their rent, let alone fulfill the dream of buying a home. Last week during a meeting of my Advisory Council on Economic Vitality, a property manager shared that more than one-third of its units contain multiple families who live together. There are some signs that housing costs are beginning to slow, largely because of rising interest rates intended to ease growing inflation. Multifamily construction also remains strong, helping us increase supply at a more rapid pace. The number of multifamily units permitted through the end of the third quarter is well above year-to-date total from last year, and is more than double the year-to-date average of the previous four years. The pace of single-family permits has cooled a little bit with rising costs of materials, but it's still consistent with levels from the previous years. And the number of total residential units continues to be strong for a second consecutive year with much more in the pipeline. That news, especially the additions to the housing inventory, is helpful for the health of our community and to the city as an organization. Adding to inventory at all levels really is our best way out. At the same time, we need to stabilize the city organization to continue providing services at the highest levels. General Fund revenue for 2022 is projected to increase 4.5% over last year. Sales tax projected to be at 5.3% over last year. Both are relatively strong positions as we enter a new recession. Looking forward to next year, the outlook is a little more conservative, given the uncertainty of a national economy. That will require us to be more creative and to focus on the real necessities. We have an opportunity to maintain our discipline even as we prioritize people in neighborhoods and with housing needs. We must strategically invest the rest of our Federal American Rescue Plan dollars in solidifying the operational delivery of critical services at the community, the administration, the City Council I've identified as priorities, and that benefit those who we serve each and every day. This includes increasing the speed and efficiency in filling our police and fire vacancies, improving our regional dispatch capabilities to send help where it's needed more affordably, and implementing a new police staffing model that will place more officers on patrol in neighborhoods while addressing officer fatigue and burnout. We can do all of that and maintain our reserves at a reasonable level, even while investing a little of our rainy day funds in this tightening economy. It has taken us three years in an extreme set of circumstances to arrive at a place where we have to use extreme caution with our spending while meeting very real household needs. The discipline that we have shown as an organization has put us in a position to invest in people in our neighborhoods, people who need housing, and people who keep our services operating at the highest level. We are council at a critical juncture, and this is our path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Woodward.
Thank you.
We have a somewhat anticlimactic legislative agenda. In fact, nobody has even signed up to testify except for open forum, but let's go to the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Value blanket renewal 204 with Health Frick Brothers Boiler Works Incorporated, Lawrence, Massachusetts, for the purchase of boiler tubes for use at the waste energy facility from November 1, 2022 through October 31, 2023. Total cost not to exceed $1,900,000, including tax. Number two, contract renewal 304 with Bay Valve Service LLC, Longview, Washington, for onsite valve repair services at the waste energy facility from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, not to exceed $325,000, including tax. Number three, contract with DECO Incorporated, Raleigh, North Carolina, for air emissions compliance testing at the waste energy facility from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, not to exceed $135,278, excluding tax. Number four, contract renewal 104 with Knight Construction and Supply Incorporated, Deer Park, Washington, for mechanical repairs at the waste energy facility from November 1, 2022 through October 31, 2023, not to exceed $2,200,000, including tax. Number five, contract with Knight Construction and Supply Incorporated, Deer Park, Washington, for emergency repair of the tipping floor at the waste energy facility, not to exceed $827,310, plus tax. Relates to Special Budget Ordinance C-36291. Number six, Amendment Consultant Agreement with Parametrics Incorporated, Spokane for On-Call Civil Engineering Services for 2021 to 2023 Non-Federal Projects. Additional $600,000. Total contract amount $1,200,000. Number seven, Extension 3 of 3 and Amendment Number 1 of the amended water supply agreement with the City of Airway Heights, extending the agreement through June 15, 2026, and providing for increased collaboration as well as reimbursement to the City of Spokane for water modeling and analysis in relation to Airway Heights water infrastructure analysis. Number eight, three-year personal services agreement with ALS Group, USA Corporation, Houston, Texas, to provide specialized testing of wastewater and stormwater for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility from October 17, 2022 through October 18, 2025, not to exceed $221,520, plus tax, $73,840 annually. Number nine, public works agreement with Corrosion Companies, Washougal, Washington, for hypochloride tank repairs and modifications at the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility from October 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, $72,859, plus tax. Number 10, outside council contract amendment with Pacifica Law Group, Seattle, Washington, to provide additional legal services and advice regarding the lawsuit of Lonny Tofford versus City of Spokane. Spokane Superior Court Cause Number 22-2-000714-32, $50,000. Total contract amount $100,000. Number 11, report of the mayor pending eight claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through September 30, 2022. Total $4,446,010, with Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $3,990,377,43. B. Payroll claims of previously approved obligations through October 1, 2022, $14,474,545,56. Number 12, City Council meeting minutes for September 26 and October 6, 2022.
All right, there's no requests of public comment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, consent agenda is approved. Let's go to special budget ordinances.
Ordinance C-36290, Amending Ordinance Number C-36161, passed by the City Council December 13, 2021, and entitled, "In ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022," excuse me, "making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane Government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing that shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared emergency in appropriating funds in Solid Waste Fund." Number one, increase appropriation by $172,300. Number two, the increase in appropriation is provided solely for the purchase and installation of a new air dryer, which shall be funded from unappropriated fund balance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the Solid Waste Fund. This action arises from the need to mitigate months-long lead times.
There's no public comment on any of these, and I'm imagining there's no controversy. So does anyone have any objection to her just reading all of them? We can vote for all of them at once?
Nope. Okay. Ordinance C-36291, Solid Waste Fund. Number one, increase appropriation by $827,310. Number two, the increase in appropriation is provided solely for repairs to the tipping floor, which shall be funded from unappropriated fund balance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the Solid Waste Fund. This action arises from the need to repair substantial damage to the waste energy tipping floor. Ordinance C-36292, Solid Waste Fund. Number one, increase appropriation by $1,100,000. Two, the increase in appropriation is provided solely for the purchase of parts and supplies, which shall be funded from unappropriated fund balance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the Solid Waste Fund. This action arises from the need to mitigate months-long lead times. Ordinance C-36293, Solid Waste Fund. Number one, increase appropriation by $500,000. Two, the increase in appropriation is provided solely for transportation and disposal services, which shall be funded from unappropriated fund balance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the Solid Waste Fund. This action arises from the need to meet tonnage estimates through the end of the year.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, all of those passed seven to zero. Excuse me, six to zero, thank you. I should say they passed unanimously, but only six to zero. Okay, that brings us, we have one resolution.
Resolution 2022-90, adopting the 2022 Parks and Natural Lands Master Plan.
All right, that's been presented to us a few times. A lot of community commentary, pretty exciting stuff. No public comment. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm a little set I'm not one of the sponsors, because I really, really support this. And I was a part of the work group as this was in process over the course of about a year when this was being put together. And I, you know, one of my big things that I have been trying to advocate for since I started on the council is to make Mini Haha a major park. And so I think this represents sort of that first step in getting Mini Haha to that point. There's just a ton of opportunity with that park. And one of the things that was shared with me a lot as I was campaigning for this position was from folks who live in that neighborhood, just concerns over the lack of investment, the lack of attention and care that that park has received over 20 years or longer. And so I think this represents, I mean, this is going to do a lot of good for just about every neighborhood in the city. A lot of stuff has been pointed out, discrepancies in terms of parkland between different parts of our community, and the lack of parks in District 1 in particular. Districts 1 and 3 really together need a lot more. But really, for me, that Mini Haha piece of having that major park potentially cited in Northeast Spokane, I think is a huge win in this. So I'm really, really happy to see that. In fact, one of those work group meetings that I participated in, just to make sure that I could be emphatic about Mini Haha being included, took place during one of our ultrasounds for our, when our child was, or when my wife was still pregnant with our child. And so literally, I'm in the room with, doing the ultrasound, watching that, and listening on the phone to our conversation about the parks plan. So that's how committed I was to this and to seeing it through that Mini Haha would be identified as a major park. So now we just need to find the funding to actually make those investments a reality.
All right. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Yeah, this is a pretty amazing plan. I went back and start reviewing it again today. But it invests in neighborhood parks. Riverfront Park is our crown jewel, but the pandemic showed us people were outside, close to their homes, creating that environment to get out, to live and play. So I'm excited as our neighborhood parks are upgraded to meet the needs of our various communities. That is exciting, along with new playground equipment.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I appreciate the Park Board's thoughtfulness and their community outreach. There's a lot of things on this, on this plan that I don't think we would have seen five or 10 years ago, but, you know, they continue to listen. And so, you know, pickleball courts and dog parks and things that the community is asking for, things that are, we're going to see coming to fruition here in the next few years. And so I think it's great. I think this council, I think everybody here is very supportive of parks and making sure that our families have a good place to play and to live and to picnic and convene and celebrate. And so I think this is a great day, and moving forward, I can't wait to see what our neighborhood parks, as Councilmember Wilkerson alluded to, what they're going to look like here in the future, so.
I just have to thank them for their engagement on this whole plan. It was extensive and inclusive, and as demonstrated in the plan.
And they won an award for their outreach.
Yes, very important, yes.
Yes.
Wisely. Well, Councilmember Cathcart, I was also on the group with you, and so I am appointing us honorary sponsors for this. And I also wanted to say, I've been on the campaign for dog parks everywhere in the city, and I finally felt like we broke through on that, and now we have new controversies. People don't want dog parks nearby them, so... But I'll take those controversies, because I think that is the next step of really figuring out how parks can work for everyone. So with that, with kudos to staff and community members in the future, and don't be surprised if there's a bond proposal not too long after that, funding neighborhood parks. I think we did, the last bond really was for the bigger parks, last two bonds for that, and now we're ready to go out into the neighborhoods. And so I'm pretty sure we'll all be excited to help strategize that and support that and give the voters a choice if they want to fund that. So with that, prepare to vote. Okay, sorry. Prepare to vote again. All right, unanimously, six to zero. All right, that brings us to open forum. We have seven people signed up on the sheet, all here. And just the first one can make their way down, M.R. Mitchell. And while M.R.'s coming down to the podium, just to remind people, we have three minutes. I have the timer. It will go, when it goes to yellow, that means there's one minute left. When it goes to red, that means time is up.
If you pull up anything, I'll start there.
Well, but, just let me finish my introductory. So, and please address your comments to me, the chair. We ask people not to either cheer for people, or boo people, or make any kind of disturbance out there, so it's a safe place. And we ask people not to denigrate any individual people personally. And we're happy to have you, so.
Could we switch the order around a little bit? I need to pull these up in a different way than I have them here.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll come back to you is William. And after William is Sherri Barnett, and then Linda Peterson. Welcome, William.
My name is Will. I live downtown. I was going to talk about a couple of things today, but something I mentioned that you didn't mention today, it's October 10th. It's also Columbus Day. So I just, I don't know why we didn't mention that. But also, something else... But also, something else. As a person that lives downtown, I walked past this mural. It's over by Jimmy John's. And this mural was put up a few years ago. Says it's sponsored by Spokane City Council, Downtown Spokane Partnership, and Spokane Arts. But on this mural, I find it controversial. As a minority, I don't know why. I mean, here, let me see what it says. I find it kind of racist, actually. But it says, "White silence is oppression." Then it says, "Black lives matter." And then it says, "No innocence is ignorance." Okay? Why do we have political messages like that on the wall? I don't understand it. I mean, Kanye West, just the other day, he said, "White lives matter." And he got attacked. That's, I mean, but I just, living down here, I've actually called Downtown Spokane Partnership, and they said that the city council has been notified, and they have to get the artists to remove it. This is like two years ago. So I would like to see how that could be removed. And I would like somebody to follow up with me. Like, seriously. Because I come up here and speak, I feel like I don't get no respect. I don't get, I just, I don't understand it. That incident in the park, I still haven't got it resolved. So tomorrow, I'm going to come down here, and I guess I'm going to have to sit up there at security and request to see somebody. I've seen the Parks Department head here walk out with the mayor, Johnny Perkins. These people are something else. But anyways, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming down, Will. Sherri Barnett, then Linda Peterson, and Christine Quinn.
Council president, and all members of the city council. I'm Sherri Barnett, I live in Spokane. And I'm carrying on with a little story. I don't know if Karen should remember this, Brian should remember this, and probably Lori. I sent all of you one of these magazines quite a long time ago. It's mostly concerning the Russian Revolution and the story of Solzhenitsyn. And how he was loyal. Gave up on God, and he was, joined the military, and he was loyal to the disaster that overtook Russia. And wherever this has spread, wherever communism has spread, in Russia, 60 million people were killed. In Cambodia, I can't remember the number, but it's huge. Zimbabwe, Cuba, China. Just, it has never succeeded anywhere, and we're trying it here. And we're trying it in a more colossal way than it's ever been tried before, because now we have AI and many other things, digital monetization, to where we can dehumanize people quite easily. We can just flip a lever, and they are gone. They don't have any money, they don't have any property. But when he was in the prison, he thanked God for the prison, because there he came to his sense, and he realized how precious it is, truth. He saw that when they forgot God, and they forgot their values, and they began to be afraid, and they let other people go and be put in the gulag, and other people die and didn't speak up for them, they began to have a realization that it takes a great courage to speak truth, and it takes a great courage, and it's not necessarily a good time in your life. I hope I have time to read a little bit, because this is really from Numbers, but it's a song, and it's a short part of it. "The Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. May his favor be upon you and a thousand generations, and your family, and your children, and their children, and their children. May his presence go before you and behind you and beside you, all around you and within you. He is with you, he is for you, in the morning, in the evening, in your coming, in your going, in your weeping and rejoicing. He is for you, he is for you." Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Linda Peterson. And after Linda is Christine Quinn. Not sure if I see Chris. Oh, maybe she's back there. Christine Quinn, if you're back there, you can make your way up. And Amber Durcoop.
Hi.
Hi, Linda.
I'm Linda Peterson, from Spokane again, for Dick's Hamburgers, basically. I just want to make a comment on, you know, the mayor is talking about using your money wisely. The thing is, is I understand about parks, and I love parks. I take my dog up to Manitow at the time. But the thing is, is that, and I was listening to the lady from the Logan District, we have to do something with the Spokane area downtown, with the transient problems. I don't, it needs to be addressed. I hear it from people from Quarter Lane coming into Spokane. I heard it from a lady that lived in Spokane, that came in and she used the S-word for the transients that are in Spokane downtown. We've got to do something for downtown. It's just, you see these people that are doing crack underneath their jackets and stuff like that, but nothing can be done. It's just, something has got to be done with these transients. And then, on top of that, the Hope, Camp Hope, what's going to happen when they release everybody? Where are they going to go? We've got to do something, somebody has got to. It would be so really, really neat if Spokane could come up with a solution for the transients and show the rest of the world or the United States that something can be done with them, and have hope that, you know, we're not just kicking them out. We're doing something to help them, but doing something to help the city in itself. And that's what I'd like to see. I imagine everybody else would too. But we have to come up with some solutions, even if they're just a little at a time, just to make Spokane downtown especially better. Because people from out of town, that's the first place they come through, is downtown Spokane. They don't go up north first, unless you're coming from Canada. But still, you know, we've got the transient problem. They're going all over the place, and we've got to do something. I just wanted to reiterate that, okay?
Thanks for coming down, Linda. Christine Quinn, Sarah, after Christine, Amber, and then Nolan.
Hi, I'm Christine Quinn, from West Hills. And about a month ago, my granddaughter and I were coming home late, and it's about nine at night, and I needed to run into Rosars. And there was a homeless man in front, and she said, we had snacks, we'd taken snacks. She said, "Can I give him some of my snacks?" And I said, "Sure." And we took him over to him, and he was so grateful and so thankful it was heartbreaking. And we got back in the car, and she said, "Can I give him the rest?" And she had some bottled water, and we took that. And again, it was, he was so grateful and thankful. I can't do it. I'm sorry. Friday. Friday. Friday, a family member was killed. She, at her business, this is in Colorado, made donuts and coffee for her employees every day. And she also, there was a group of homeless people there, and she also invited them to partake. And Friday, she ran out of coffee, and everybody left, and someone came back and killed her. And that's a result of deinstitutionalization. And in a sense, he's a victim. I don't know his story yet. I will, he's been arrested, I'm sure, at some point. My guess is he probably has schizophrenia and had some type of psychotic break. And this is something that shouldn't happen. My family is beyond devastated, my mom is hospitalized. And I found nothing wrong, it was just the devastation. Her parents are, our whole family is just devastated, and it's so senseless, and it's something that didn't need to happen. And I, I can't, thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Christine. We're sorry to hear that news. Amber Durcoop, and then Nolan.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for being here and for Nadine Woodward speaking. It was really nice to hear her speak. And then, this is just kind of bouncing off of like what I just mentioned about last, or last week a bit. Because last week I spoke of the homelessness crisis and the disturbance of peace within neighborhoods, and I posed a couple of questions. How can we develop a community that enables positive character and personality growth? And two, what plan can we successfully develop and execute for individuals who do or do not contribute good to our community? I had, kind of thinking about this, like, how can we go ahead, or how can we become collective and find a solution? As I think we all can agree, we would like to find, happen. And I think a platform to answer these questions are boundaries. What are our personal and individual boundaries? How are we going to let people treat us as individuals and a community? What are our neighborhood boundaries? And what are our collective community boundaries? I think once we have established what we do or do not find a value in society, we can ask, how are we going to? And at length, are we going to allow or not allow people to take precedence over our own values? I think a very large voice on this topic should be from our local law enforcement in tandem with mental health facilities. What does our law enforcement need to carry out their duty to serve and protect their community and ours? And what do our mental health facilities need in order to set and lead an example of a healthy, living community? I think these questions will most likely challenge us morally and ethically, and are also needed in order to establish a truth and foundation as to what our, as to what our boundaries are for ourselves, our community, and our society. And like the lady had just mentioned before, I think we can find a solution, I think we can do better. And I think it is in all of our best interests and our values to want to do that. And I think we can do better, especially with mental health. Like, whether it's Colorado, or our backyard, or here, like, we see it across the nation, and we are all struggling. And I would like to see us be leaders. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amber. Nolan Steiner, and then after Nolan, M.R. Mitchell.
Hello, I'm Nolan Steiner, West Hills. Nice to see you all again. I didn't really know what I was going to say today. Christine is my neighbor, so very, kind of sad for your family, Christine. Thank you for sharing. I was just thinking of a few things. I moved here from Seattle in the 90s, when I was younger. And a lot of my friends in Seattle kind of joked with me about, "Why are you moving to Spokane?" You know, it's just so different than Seattle. And I was the guy that always stood up and said, you know, "I love it in eastern Washington. It's, there's more open air. I find myself more at peace here." And I've been here for quite a long time, almost 30 years. And lately, my mindset is, I'm wondering if I made the right choice. It's, I'm not, I'm not so sure if I would say it's regret, but it's more of a questioning of, is this the place I still want to be? And a lot of it is because of what's happened in my particular neighborhood, which you all know about in West Hills. But it feels like things have shifted and deteriorated. And I know it's not up to you entirely to solve all these issues, but it feels like things have changed. And, you know, when I walk my dog every day, I run into neighbors, and there's a lot of talk in our neighborhood about things that are seemingly getting worse in our neighborhood, and where it doesn't feel like we have much of a voice. I ran into a lady, very nice, who's lived at her house for 50 years. And she also has some of the same sentiment of this town seems to be going downhill. Now, it may not follow in what Nadine Woodward just expressed in her recent comments, but I think for some of us, it does feel that way. And for whatever reason, maybe it's not shared, that sentiment. But for me, it is. I still, I'm pulling for Spokane. I still want my neighborhood to come through this recent challenge that we're experiencing, and maybe experiencing more of the same in the future with more shelters coming into our area. But I just wanted to express my sentiment that, you know, there's people like me in the past that were what Spokane wanted to come, recruit at the time, younger, professionals. And I'm not so sure if we are positioned that way as much anymore. Maybe we are, I don't know. So just wanted to express that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nolan. All right, M.R. Mitchell.
I know I'm supposed to address you, but I was curious if you had the email pictures up. Yep. You can pull, you can start anywhere, because I, it's all a mess. I rehabbed a property down at 7th and Cannon. It had been my dad's. And I had very reasonable rents. That's the police officer. They kept saying, "Call when the trespassers are there." So I called when the trespassers were there. There was still urine on the building. Went, they said, "Nope, that's, we're not going to do it." So I'm not even getting, if, let's go to the next one. We, I got three minutes.
You can use the mouse that's down there to click through.
Okay.
Go ahead and pull it closer to the microphone, so that people can.
Where's the next, where's the next on the pictures?
You just need to use the mouse or the arrows, I think, on the keyboard. Try to just click the mouse.
On the arrow. Over to the right. Over to the right. I think that's for my screenshot. Slideshow. Oh, good, thank you. Okay.
And I paused you while we were doing that, but.
Okay, oh, thank you. Okay, actually, I am going to try to find.
Make sure you're also talking in the microphone. This can come a little further over.
You guys, this is what happens when people do, okay. So here's a bookend. He's the last guy that I evicted. And he, I didn't rent to him. I was working on a place, and I went, oh, there's another one. Okay, so I was working on a place. Two and a half years, she lived there. I tried to evict her, she was doing drugs, she, she, oh, okay. So she had, she had come to me as a squatter, like, and I couldn't remove her. So she lived there two and a half years, she wrecked the place. You guys want low-income housing? Because I have, you can make only 10 hours a week and make rent. You guys, I'm being, I'm being, this is, you wouldn't believe what they, look at this. This was Matt Brumfield's place. So the, that's what they looked like before. And I got all the permits, and I fixed them, and I had help, you know, family. Made them nice. Here's, you know, that was $500. Studio, water paid, tried to do it, really nice for people. And you know what? Here's another one. Cops aren't doing anything. There should be, there's a lot. And the pictures you see, for every one picture I have, there's 10 people hanging out. Oh, I have more pictures, but I don't know where they are now.
I think you just need to go back the other way, that you've just reached the end of the ones that we opened there.
Do you think all of them?
This is everything you sent to me.
Okay, there's also like drug paraphernalia, the foils. So if you multiply, okay, so I was working on a place, I went back. I had to go to the doctors in a different county. I left on a Friday, I got back Monday, and this is Samantha Reed. This is before she went into my place. I got there, and there's pit bulls. And so I called scraps, and they say, "You open the door, we're going to charge you." And so I called the police, because anyway, two and a half years, she paid nothing. She left it. left it uninhabitable. What am I going to do? What the, you decriminalize all drugs? There is a problem. Fentanyl makes you aggressive. I was raised Mormon, I don't do it, but you know what? Since I'm having so much secondhand fentanyl smoke going in me, I am getting mad, this is ridiculous.
Your time's up for tonight, and.
Now, I've talked to Mayor Woodward, it's not getting any better. These people are going to be.
Yeah, open forum time is, is up, we're, we're done tonight, you can come back, and you can talk to us offline, not in the middle of the meeting, but we're at the end of our meeting.
Well, I hope somebody has a solution.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for coming down. That brings us to the end of open forum, the end of our meeting. Thanks, everyone, thanks for all our special guests, including the mayor. And please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.